Elizabeth would be all over there.
Yeah, she would or she wouldn't.
How are you?
Good.
But the fact is that we came in way, you know, with a fund, with a budget.
Good evening, Lake Forest, and welcome to the Monday, April the 1st, 2019 session of Lake Forest City Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Certainly. Honorable Mayor Lansing.
Here.
Alderman Beidler.
Here.
Alderman Morris.
Here.
Alderman Newman.
Here.
Alderman Riesenberg.
Here.
Alderman Prashlak.
Here.
Alderman Moreno.
Here.
Alderman Bushman.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Will you all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First item of business is comments by the mayor. First thing I'd like to do is to read a proclamation concerning Arbor Day, which we do every year because we are Tree City, USA. Whereas Arbor Day will be officially observed in the state of Illinois on Friday, April the 26th, 2019 by proclamation of the governor, and the planting of trees on Arbor Day is a traditional activity throughout the state and the city of Lake Forest. And whereas Lake Forest, with its environment of natural areas, is particularly dedicated to the observance of this day and has consistently throughout its history enacted ordinances to preserve its trees and other natural assets. And whereas citizen groups, garden clubs, and private and public institutions have actively supported preservation efforts and the renewal of natural areas through tree planting and landscape projects. And whereas the celebration of Arbor Day 2019 in Lake Forest will include the distribution of Norway spruce seedlings to students in public and private elementary schools, and Arbor Day 2019 will be celebrated throughout the day in programs at schools and other locations and at Northcroft Park located at 1365 South Ridge Road on Friday, April the 26th at 10:00 a.m., where the city's official Arbor Day trees, one hybrid accolade elm, will be planted. And whereas trees in our city, wherever they are planted, increase property values, enhance our business and residential areas, beautify our community, and are a source of joy to gladden the hearts and promote the environmental well-being of present and future generations. And whereas the city of Lake Forest has been recognized as Tree City, USA, for 39 consecutive years by the National Arbor Day Foundation. Now therefore, I, Robert Lansing, mayor of the city of Lake Forest, do hereby proclaim Friday, April the 26th, 2019 as Arbor Day in the city of Lake Forest, and I urge all citizens to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, to support our city's forestry program, to plant trees on this day, and to join in the celebration ceremonies. In witness hereof, I have hereunder set my hand and have had the seal of the city of Lake Forest affixed this 26th day of April, 2019. Next, tomorrow's election day, and all, as usual, all voters are urged to exercise their citizen rights to influence the shape of government and policy in the city. And all who are registered are welcome. Last, I'd like to make mention of the high tempo of police and ambulance operations on the highways of Lake Forest and in the surrounding area in recent many weeks and recent days. This is exceedingly dangerous work, writ large the past month with the fatality on Route 41 in Lake Forest and the death of two Illinois State Police troopers, one on Interstate 90 and another a few days ago on I-294 near the Lake Forest oasis. These are grievous losses, all in unique and unusual circumstances, underlining once again for all citizens the high calling our public safety officers pursue, going in harm's way for our benefit. Our prayers go forth to all involved. With that, we're gonna move over the comments by the city manager because the annual Emerging Artists Awards are gonna take place here a little later. There was a miscommunication internal to the art group as to what time the big show was tonight, and they should be here in the next 15 or 20 minutes. So we'll press forward with the agenda and then come back to the city manager's report. Next item of agenda content is opportunity for citizens to address the council on non-agenda items. Is there anyone wishing to speak? Seeing none. Next item is items for omnibus vote consideration. There are seven tonight, and as usual, I will read through them. First is approval of the March 18th, 2019 city council meeting minutes. Number two is approval of the check register for the period of February 23rd through March 22nd, 2019. Third, award of a bid in the amount of $84,000 with a 5% or $4,200 contingency to ATP Enterprise Group for the Lake Forest Recreation Center front entrance replacement project. Fourth, award of a bid in the amount of $84,500 to Best Buy Carpet for the city of Lake Forest City Hall Carpet Replacement Project. Number five, authorization for additional funds for repainting, lettering, safety upgrades, and various repairs to use fire apparatus. Number six, consideration of ordinances approving recommendations from the zoning board of appeals. This is a first reading, and if desired by council, final approval. Number seven, consideration of recommendations from the plan commission and building review board in support of the second phase of the McKinley Road redevelopment. This is the approval of plat, the plating, by motion and first reading, and if desired by council, final approval of an ordinance approving the architectural design. As usual, if there's any particular item a council member would like removed for separate consideration, we'll do that. But short of that, are there any particular questions or comments on any of these items?
I would just like to see a brief presentation on the McKinley Road development because that changed, I think, from what we were, what was originally approved. And I'm also interested in the comment by, I think it was one plan commission member who did not vote in favor of it, and that sort of caught my attention.
The, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The change that occurred in that development was that the second building that's proposed was widened as a result of negotiations with the church. During the plan commission and city council's consideration of McKinley Road redevelopment master plan, there was actually encouragement to talk with the church because there was concern about the long-term appearance and viability of the McKinley Road streetscape. So the change was that the second building did get a little wider. The master plan was the overall conceptual plan, didn't necessarily lock in the footprints. The building is just about the same length, perhaps a little bit shorter. Open space is still preserved to the east of that building, and the property that was committed as part of a land swap is still, will still come to the city for parking spaces as part of the library campus. And then your second question was?
Well, first of all, was there, is there going to be a demolition of that house then to the south, right?
Correct. The developer and the church representatives were able to negotiate. This is the existing office building. This is McKinley Road. This is north. This is Deer Path. The developer and representatives of the church negotiated over a period of several months. So this house will be developed. The southern 20 feet of that parcel will remain with the church property at the end of this overall development. The northern 30 feet will be incorporated as part of the development site. This is difficult to see. It's better on your, on your screens in front of you, but the new building then is configured in this area, so it extends slightly wider than it extended in the original master plan, and that is exactly the same dimension as the existing building. Again, to the east, the open space, which over time, once the third phase is discussed, could be expanded to the east. And this area right here is the portion of the property that will be transferred to the city and be incorporated as part of the library campus.
So we're gaining parking for the library?
Yes. And that was part of the original requirement that the city council put in place as part of the master plan.
And my second question was the objection of one of the plan commissioners.
The nay vote on the plan commission was pertaining to the design of the building. The overall design felt that it was too urban in character and perhaps should have been more residential. The first building had previously been approved by the building review board, approved by the city council. The second building will be constructed identical to that, and that was already reviewed by the building review board, who actually commended the first building and really asked for assurance that the quality of the architectural details and materials of the second building would be to, would match that quality of the first building.
That was my understanding when I, when I looked at the packet. So I was surprised that there was an objection to the second building because it did look to me like it was identical to the first building.
And the dissenting vote was actually a commissioner who wasn't part of the earlier discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any others?
I would say, I actually think that this plan is much better than the plan that, A, we approved and that first, certainly first came to the PPL.
Yes. All right. Well, thank you. Then if there are no other comments, then I'll ask for motion to approve the seven omnibus items as presented.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's a roll call vote.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Newman?
Aye.
Alderman Rummel?
Aye.
Alderman Riesenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Prashlak?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Eight yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
I think, why don't we dauntingly plow ahead?
Yeah, sure.
Because I think we're still waiting for more young artists, right?
Yeah. If you may, Mayor, my suggestion would be, as we await a few more of our award recipients to arrive, that perhaps we move forward to the presentation from Mike Strong regarding approval of the Northern Illinois Benchmarking Cooperative.
Okay. All right. Let's do that. All right. Moving around the agenda here, this is under our new business, new business. Item number two, which is approval of an agreement with the University of Illinois, of Illinois at Chicago to provide data and benchmarking administrative support to the Northern Illinois Benchmarking Cooperative in an amount not to exceed $70,000. And it's really more of a renewal of a...
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. So this evening, yes, there is an agreement with the University of Illinois-Chicago for a continuation of administrative support for the Northern Illinois Benchmarking Cooperative. I thought I'd start for the benefit of council just with some brief history, and then we'll talk later about the agreement and scope of work planned for this upcoming year. So according to the charter of the Northern Illinois Benchmarking Cooperative, you know, really, this was established in 2017 with the overarching goal of using data to make better decisions. And that was sort of the goal from the start. And through benchmarking efforts, you know, we're really able to compare one organization's process or metrics with another to develop best practices and putting those practices into a place to hopefully achieve some innovation, but also some performance improvement. So we started after the International City-City Management Association discontinued its performance management program in 2016. At that time, the city had been a member of that platform for about six to eight years, and a few communities in the area who were engaged in that process decided, you know, we don't want to stop performance measure investigation, we want to continue that. So a charter was established with seven communities, which is now 12. It's grown, and you can see varying sizes from Lake Bluff to Arlington Heights, who are part of this group. And in 2017, the city council approved an agreement with UIC for data support, administrative support. And then shortly thereafter, we established a memorandum of understanding with those, with those communities to work together, to investigate service issues, investigate performance metrics, and hopefully collaborate with, with one another. So this past year, I should say, take a year lightly, it's been about 18 to 24 months to get to this point, but our first service area that we investigated was police. And we started with this chart, and I know for those watching at home and for those in the audience, it may be hard to see, but it's really a six, call it a six-step process. We've identified it, identified some service issues. We've asked UIC to put a best practice report on those service issues. We work in subcommittees on those three service issues. We collect data, we evaluate, we discuss, and then hopefully we can learn from one another on, on those outcomes. The three service areas that police looked into was recruitment, retention, policing, and mental health. And then the third one was communications and public trust. So how communications can impact or affect public trust? Those were three issue areas that all 12 departments felt, hey, these are important to us. We don't quite know how to put a finger on them, how to address them. And so those were chosen as the three service areas that, that we investigated. So for the past 18 months, maybe six months, we've been working in the subcommittees to kind of work on the reports for each of those, each of those service areas. So year two, and I guess just looking back at year one, when you think about those three service areas, we certainly learned a lot, and I'm somewhat reminded by, you know, Peter Drucker's quote, "If you want something new, you have to stop doing something old." This was a whole new process for us. And to bring UIC in to manage this performance measurement consortium, if you will, was certainly something to, that we had to learn from each other. You know, it's not benchmarking. We're not just taking data and then putting it up on a board and talking about it. We're identifying the issues, then seeing what performance measures we have to investigate to evaluate those, our performance of those service areas. It's sort of backwards, if you think about traditional benchmarking programs. So we certainly had to learn from that. It's been an evolution. Police was, I think, brought on board, and I think has done a good job handling some of that. But as we think about moving this into sort of the next cycle or the version 2.0, you know, we want to view this more as best practices, not just data mining, which I think is important. Data mining is important on a baseline, but when you start talking about improving services, I think that's when we have to make sure we can really compare each other and, and select services that, A, we have some control over, some authority over, and, you know, areas that we can actually take action on. You know, for an example, mental health, there are about four unified codes that we can use to identify those calls. Not every community's tracking those calls the same way. Not every community has the ability to implement new coding solutions. So we have to work sometimes within the means that we have to identify issues that we can all tackle together, not that may rely on an outside agency to, to support. We had a similar conversation about pensions. Well, some pensions we have control of, some of those issues we don't have control over. So can we identify service issues that we have the ability to manage and monitor? And can we meet in groups maybe earlier in the process? We relied a lot on UIC to send information back to us, and I think as we rethink that, we want to start driving the conversation at the service level versus having UIC go and investigate, you know, service issues that they may not have a lot of context or knowledge or expertise in. So having, having the subcommittees kind of, kind of manage that is important. But we do remain committed, the NIBC remains committed to seeing this grow, and as, as indicated up here, we, this is not gonna work, really want to see this grow each year and to dive deeper in so that we have the ability to add new services each year. So for instance, fire, public works, or other departments that we all share in commonality that we can sort of investigate and talk about each year is, is gonna be important as we, as we move forward. So the agreement that was included in your, in your packet just really continues UIC's support of the Benchmarking Cooperative. They would serve as the administrator. They'd facilitate the meetings. They would take notes with the subcommittee groups. They'd help identify data measures, put together some recommendations, do the, the analysis, if you will, and then put final reports together. But one of the new areas we've asked for them is the technical assistance. We have the ability to meet, to confer, to have dialogue, but we really need some technical assistance from the academia side to bring research in. You know, can we tie the, the practice in the field with some of the academic literature? And we, we want to see a better integration there, a tighter integration there, which is something that we're looking forward to expanding upon next year. And so similar to, to last year, the total cost of the agreement is $70,000, but pursuant to that MOU we have with the 11 other communities, that is a shared cost. So the net cost is really about $5,800, but since the city is the payer of the consortium for, cooperative for now, we do have to approve the agreement at its full amount pursuant to our purchasing policies. So we met in January to talk about this agreement, talk about the scope of work. We also met with a full NIBC membership in February. We have recommended today, this evening, to approve the agreement in substantially the form that has been attached. The city attorney's reviewed that and has not had any questions on that as well. So this evening, really looking for support from the council on the agreement, and we look forward to engaging year two. And just so you're aware, we've already started having preliminary conversations with fire departments, and the conversation has, I think, been focused around health and wellness of firefighters, work, workman's comp injuries, on-job injuries, and then also, interestingly, a financial sustainability of fire departments. So looking at cost of service, looking at how those costs can be investigated, which you can already start to see the lessons learned in year one and how we've applied that now to year two, or at least are starting to. So hopefully that will continue to, to expand and continue to evolve as we continue to meet. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or talk more descriptively about our process.
I just have a general question either for you, Mike, or Jason, or even Elizabeth. With our new ERP system, do you expect enhanced output from putting these two systems together?
I would say that the ERP system provides us better ability to report on quantifiable financial data. To the extent that the cooperative is looking at any measurements related to budget or financial indices, then I think the ERP system will certainly be helpful in that regard. But to the extent that it be less financial and more operational, I don't know that we would have that ability in the system.
Thank you.
Mike, it certainly sounds like, I mean, I realize that we're approving 70, but that our part's 50, about $5,800. Sounds like you think we're getting real benefit for that, for that money, especially the longer we're in this partnership, we're learning more. Is that, is that accurate?
Yeah, I would agree. And, you know, UIC is working on this behind the scene all year round.
Yeah.
And I think one of the conversations we had at the board level of the NIBC is the value proposition of having, you know, not just faculty at UIC, but also the MPA students.
Yeah.
You know, it's a wonderful opportunity for them to learn, to put into practice some of the skills they're learning in the classroom. So yeah, I think the value extends beyond the cost of...
What about another, so there are 11 other communities have, have, so for example, have you established relationships with any of the, of your peers in the other communities? Has some of that happened too, which is not something you can force or predict, but is sometimes a benefit of these kind of things?
Yeah, definitely at the administration level. I think the chiefs certainly meet and collaborate quite often.
Anyway.
Yeah. But yeah, at the management level, to have the ability to have 11 other, you know, colleagues or, you know, municipalities to, to, to connect with is certainly a benefit as well that we're starting to see, and collaboration in other areas beyond just the, the NIBC. So...
Good. So it sounds like something we want to keep doing.
Thank you. Yes, Michelle.
Two questions, Mike, if I may. First of all, this is the second year. Have we received 100% of the amounts due and owing under the MOU last year?
Yes.
Thank you. Just had to be sure.
Excellent question.
Secondly, the reports that are generated and the findings and the research that's sourced, will that be made available more broadly outside of, for example, the police department so that we can all kind of, you know, lock in on what, what people are thinking about from best practice?
Sure. Yeah, great question, and one that we've talked about actually a couple times internally with, with the member communities. I think, you know, the goal of that report is to have some public summary available. Obviously, there's a lot of interesting data in it.
Right.
And I think there's some, some questions right now of, you know, how can it, how can we apply that to our, with our, our departments? But then what's the comfort level of some of the departments releasing some of that data? So I think there's a, sometime we have to take a look back and see exactly what's in it to, to see how comfortable each of those 12 communities are, you know, and making some of that available. But our hope is that there's at least some report available to just demonstrate, you know, some of the great conversations we've been having within the committees.
Thank you. And just one quick follow-on, if I may. Our geography and demographic is similar to some of the communities and very dissimilar to others. Do you anticipate that we'll see some value from looking at similar communities where there's a lot of, of scale and needing to apply those resources effectively?
Yeah. Another great question, one we talked about as well, about maybe supplementing some of the data in this report with more transparent, just benchmark data, you know, population, budgets, you know, some of the typical community, community data that you type, you start to see, cost per capita, you know, there's, there's other ways we can put benchmark data in just to have that because, you know, I know there are other communities, member communities that are, have their councils are interested in that type of data. So we need to, I think, include some of that in the report, and some of that will be available down the road.
Excellent.
I remember when this started that, well, our former city manager, Bob Kiley's fingerprints were all over this, and his leadership really was, I think, very important to, to bring this to fruition and to galvanize the communities, the initial communities to come together. And frankly, it needed some leadership, both to do the, University of Illinois wants one payer, you know, one name on the contract. So Lake Forest stepped up to do that, and I, we have good credit partners in this, so we don't need to worry about that. But in the fullness of time, the way I've always thought of it, it's quite a research forum because you move from topic to topic and come back to some, you know, from year to year, and the important issues and questions you can look at. For those of you who've been involved in benchmarking, it's much harder than you never think it would be to normalize data between different sizes and types of communities. But for certain things like, oh, the handling of the mental health calls by the police department or something is, is more qualitative and irrespective of scale. more qualitative and irrespective of scale, and how do you do it, and how do you do it well, and that sort of thing. So, any other thoughts?
Well, I just was, so, it sounded to me when I read this that they're working on the report for police. Do we know when that might be?
Later this month. The committees actually will be reporting, I believe, Friday, and then there'll be a review of the report with a larger membership thereafter, so.
And so, just what types of things do we think that report will address?
Oh, well, speaking from the committee that I was represented, which was the communications and public trust, right, one of the takeaways or projects, we're looking at a survey document. You know, how can we evaluate and assess attitude, attitudes, reputation of departments? How can we survey that as part of our programs, or even community-wide survey questions that we can add, look at, just to give us some feedback? So, some of the reports are A, looking at the context of the issue, you know, is this really a problem? What is, what's our question or concern? We're working with UIC to develop some measures or metrics, or, in this case, it could be very much of a qualitative approach or process approach to being able to capture data moving forward, similar to mental health. Some of the conversations they're having on that committee has been unifying coding of calls. So, just, some communities north of 50% of their calls are related in some way to mental health, but there's no way for them to track this consistently across the departments. And so, some conversation that's been coming out of that committee has been, what if we could code these similarly so we can now then benchmark, or at least compare, how these communities relate to each other in terms of that? Because some of these issues may seem amorphous and seem vague, but, you know, they really are weighing on the minds of the chiefs as we have these conversations.
And we may or may not see those results, right?
Right. I mean, I think it, time will tell in terms of what data will be available, but hopefully, the departments find that information useful as they staff, as they, you know, put their budgets together, as they, you know, try to improve the service provisions.
Maybe we could get a redacted version like the Mueller report.
Or the whole thing, too, or the whole thing.
All right. Well, thank you. May I have a motion, oh, with regard to this, is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on this particular issue? Seeing none, I'll bring it back and ask for a motion for approval of an agreement and substantially the form attached here, too, with the University of Illinois at Chicago to provide data and benchmarking administrative support to the Northern Illinois Benchmarking Cooperative in an amount not to exceed $70,000. So, move.
Second.
So, roll call vote.
Alderman Beidler.
Aye.
Alderman Morris.
Aye.
Alderman Newman.
Aye.
Alderman Rumel.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Preschlack.
Aye.
Alderman Moreno.
Aye.
Alderman Bushman.
Aye.
Eight yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you. City manager, I think we're back to the beginning here.
Yeah. Thank you very much, Mayor, and members of council. I think we're ready now. I don't know the reason that most people are here tonight. So, I am pleased to be able to introduce to all of you once again, Gillian Chapman, who is the creative director of the Deer Path Art League. In addition to this being the 65th anniversary of the Deer Path Art League's existence, and I hope I have that right, this is also the 12th annual presentation of the Emerging Artists Awards here before the city council. So, we're all very excited to recognize this year's award recipients. See that they're all here in attendance tonight. And so, with that, I'm happy to turn it over to Gillian.
Thank you, city council and mayor. I just wanted to tell you a little bit about the Deer Path Art League, and then we will present the awards. For over 65 years, it has been the mission of the Deer Path Art League to spark, nurture, and enhance creativity as well as raise awareness and appreciation of the arts in the community. We are a small grassroots 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization here in downtown Lake Forest. It is important to us that the arts receive the care and advocacy it needs to thrive on the North Shore. We host a number of community outreach programs such as Art Fair in the Square in Market Square over Labor Day weekend, the young artist section of the art fair where children can display and sell their artwork, adult and youth art classes, the Lake Forest High School Scholarship, and of course, the Emerging Artists Exhibit. We are deeply grateful that we could continue to host our annual Emerging Artists Exhibit at the gallery here in Lake Forest, which is a creative space that represents independent artists and artist groups with a culinary studio whose menu is inspired by the exhibit on display. The Emerging Artists Exhibit would not be able to continue without their support and the generous support of the city of Lake Forest. The arts deserve a place in the community to enrich the youth and encourage them to explore the endless possibilities we can give them. The Emerging Artists Exhibit will remain on display till April 27th, and that's all. Thank you. This is a picture of the front window with the exhibit on there for the vinyl. And then we had a huge turnout yesterday for the opening. I'm just pulling up my list of the winners. Okay, so first up will be Lake Forest High School. So, this is the section of the artists that were on display. Mayor, if you want to come up.
Sure.
To present the awards. And of course, my notes just deleted for some reason. There we go. Okay. So, first for Lake Forest High School, the first emerging artist is Fiona Nugent.
Rob, turn around so.
So, mom can get it.
There we go.
Great. Excellent.
Oh, Fiona, if you would just come stand up here. We're going to do a group picture at the end. You can see the artist's work up on the presenter. So, next for Lake Forest High School is Hadley Bear. And next for Lake Forest High School is Holly Porter. The next school we have is Woodlands Academy. The winner is Erin Bowler. Also for Woodlands Academy is Kate Weingrand. Next up is Deer Path Middle School, Anthony Tomaska. Also for Deer Path Middle School is Natalie LaMarden. Next school is Everett Elementary, and our first winner is Caitlin Bishop. Also for Everett Elementary School is Audrey Adam.
There's still a camera coming.
Audrey. Next school is Cherokee Elementary, and we, our first winner is Eloise Mulliken. Also for Cherokee Elementary is Steven Gonzola. Our next school is Lake Bluff Elementary, and our first winner is William Kurth. Also for Lake Bluff Elementary, Eloise Costano. Our next school is Kinder Haven Preschool, and our first winner is Leo Goodfren. Also for Kinder Haven Preschool is Reese Pirito. Next school is Sheridan Elementary, and we have Ian, oh, Caitlin Baker. Our next winner is Ian Rite. Our next school is Lake Bluff Middle School, and our first winner is Kate Johnson. Also from Lake Bluff Middle School is Ella Badger. Next school is Lake Forest Academy, and we have Will Azelf. Also from Lake Forest Academy is Camille Pastrana. And our last award winner for Lake Forest Academy is Tony Liu. Are there any award winners that might have shown up a couple minutes late that they still need? No? Okay, great. Thank you, everyone and all of the winners.
Yes, all the award, art award winners and parents are welcome to leave. We'll move forward with our agenda, but they're celebrating to be done. Oh, that was, that was wonderful. Next item of business on our agenda is new business in consideration of recommendations from the plan commission relating to a portion of the Amberly Woods site and overall Route 60 corridor. And this would be an approval by motion presented by Lake Forest Director of Community Development, Catherine Zernia.
Hard act to follow. This is a recommendation that comes to you from the plan commission. It is a bit of an unusual recommendation, so I will try and give a little bit of background. Last month, second week in March, the plan commission considered a petition for redevelopment of the northwest corner, eight and a half acres of the Amberly Woods 40-acre parcel. This entire parcel is the Amberly Woods development. This is Route 60. This is the tollway, the railroad tracks, Stonebridge Development and Conway Farms. Conway Office Park is to the north. In 2006, after many, many, many months of consideration, the city council approved an annexation agreement for this 40-acre parcel, a subdivision agreement, a development settlement agreement, a plat of subdivision. And those approvals granted authorization for a mixed-use development of this 40-acre site to proceed. The south half was approved for development with 24 single-family homes. This corner is preserved wetlands. The northeast quadrant of the property was approved for development with two condominium buildings. One of those is developed. The second pad is located here. And then the eight-and-a-half acre northwest quadrant of the property was approved for a mix of office, commercial, service business-type uses. Again, that was a number of years ago. The property has only partially built out since then, and the request of the plan And the request that the Plan Commission considered in early March pertained just to the eight and a half acre parcel. And that request asked for city approval of a change of use, a change of land use to allow the uses on the eight and a half acre parcel to include assisted living and memory care in addition to commercial restaurant service businesses. Requested a change of zoning or perhaps modification to the zoning district. That entire property currently is zoned transitional district. And that district, the purpose of that district, among other things, speaks to preservation of natural areas, speaks to uses that support the corporate office park located nearby, and uses that really create an interaction between residential, institutional, and office businesses. The request also requested approval of a new site plan. As part of the annexation subdivision development settlement agreement for the property, a specific site plan was approved. And finally, the, the request also asked that the plat of subdivision be amended. The approval of the new site plan was proposing a change in building footprints, what appears to be an increase in impervious surface, some changes to access, to parking, to tree removal, and perhaps relocation, modification of the berms. The recorded, recorded plat of subdivision, the changes being requested in addition to reconfiguration of the lots, what also was requested is a change to the setbacks for that property. As part of the earlier discussion of this property, along with the entire Route 60 corridor, there is currently a hundred and fifty-foot setback in place, which could present some issues if we really want to see that property developed from, for commercial uses. In addition, the recorded plat of subdivision provides for some drainage and tree preservation easements that also would be modified under this request. So a request of this type is a, is a pretty unusual and a pretty big ask from the Plan Commission. The Plan Commission, I, I think, learning from past experiences paused and was reluctant to simply begin the in-depth review of the site plan, in-depth review of the technical aspects, the stormwater, impervious surface, tree removal landscaping, demolition of the house, knowing that that would occur over the course of many meetings and knowing that the petitioner would need to incur additional costs for further developing engineering, further working through detention calculations. And so the Plan Commission, in a bit of an unusual step, perhaps an enlightened step, forwarded a recommendation to the Plan Commission to deny the petition. Not because they did an extensive review of the site plan or the request, but instead to really send the message that in this case, the threshold issue is really the question of use. And the Plan Commission didn't feel like they could pursue a discussion about a use that differed from the current comprehensive plan designation, that was not consistent with the current zoning, and was not consistent with the various approvals that are in place. The Plan Commission clearly based their petition on those inconsistencies and the fact that they wanted to send a clear message to the petitioner and, and not have the petitioner walk away thinking it was appropriate to invest more time and money, or, or at least that the Plan Commission wasn't encouraging that petitioner to invest more time and money at this point in the process. They felt that that was premature. At the Plan Commission, there was some conversation about tabling, recommending, tabling of the petition rather than denial. The Plan Commission came down on the side of recommending denial simply because they wanted to send that clear message. But along with the recommendation for denial, the Plan Commission is recommending to the City Council that you advance the review of, a, a review of the Route 60 corridor as the next phase of the comprehensive plan update. The Working Group for the Waukegan Road Comprehensive Plan Update Phase One recently completed their work. The Plan Commission will hear that, begin to consider that work at their April meeting next week. So the timing is right for us to move into the next phase. The Plan Commission thought this was a good opportunity, rather than incrementally looking at this site for which much due diligence was done in the past, to really step back, make sure we're looking at the corridor, really reevaluating and acknowledging that perhaps a change in uses is appropriate. Some members of the Plan Commission were interested in having the idea of assisted living explored further, but they were cautious about, about doing that on an incremental basis and felt that that would be inappropriate or inconsistent with the city's tradition of long-term planning and comprehensive planning. Since the Plan Commission meeting, the petitioner did submit a letter, which I believe is in your packet, asking that, first acknowledging that the Plan Commission's recommendation for a long-term study, a longer, a more comprehensive study of the area was appropriate, but asking that rather than the council taking the action to deny the petition, that you simply set it aside, that, that you table it with the acknowledgement from the petitioner that the, the use is really, understanding whether or not the city supports the proposed assisted living use on the property is really the first step. This, coming to you with a recommendation that differs from the Plan Commission is unusual, but this is not inconsistent with the intent of the Plan Commission's discussion, nor with the intent of their recommendation. This simply would, again, set the petition aside, would keep it alive, so to speak, so it wouldn't have to be reapplied. And, and if in fact, through the comprehensive plan, we, we get some clear direction, we can proceed. Because there is a lot of work that will need to be done on, on the site plan and the technical aspects of the plan. So the recommendation before you is to table the petition, but also to provide staff with direction to proceed in an expeditious manner with a study of the route corridor area as the next phase of the comprehensive plan. Just as a, a real quick overview, if you authorize that study, some of the topics that will likely be the subject of discussion include a relook at the current uses, a careful study of how the area has developed, what air, what portions, what properties within that corridor have not developed, understanding how best to enhance the existing uses in the area, to, to be additive to what's there, identifying what's missing in the area, what gaps, what are the challenges, what are the opportunities that, that perhaps in 2006, we really didn't fully understand? What, what's changed more broadly in, in the economy, in, in the interests of, of the community? And to explore alternative uses, but in doing so, to really think through what is the need? What is appropriate in that location? What are the costs, benefits, and value of, of various uses to the community? And to consider that, that area looking broadly at stormwater management. A, a lot has changed since 2006. Are, are there different ways to address stormwater management? Really looking at vehicular circulation through the area. As, as we now know, Conway Park is, is more built out. There's some potential for additional growth. So really looking at how do, how do we separate residential traffic from non-residential traffic? That was discussed in, in 2006 and, and a conclusion wasn't reached at that time. How do we assure appropriate emergency access? How do we look at bicycle and pedestrian connections, not only within the community, but how do we provide connections and take advantage, allow our residents to take advantage of connections that may be located just west of us? I'm, I'm sure as part of any look at this area, the streetscape character will be considered. This area has often been talked about as, as yet another gateway, one of many that we have to our community. But importantly, and consistent with the traditions of Lake Forest, this study will give us an opportunity to look at the area comprehensively and to really, as opposed to making a knee-jerk decision, think about what's best for the long term, for, for community character, for the community financially, for residents who live in the area, and for businesses in that area, which are really an important part of our community to attract and retain. What is before you tonight is a recommendation, again, a slightly different from what came to you from the Plan Commission, but a recommendation to approve a motion tabling the petition, simply setting it aside, keeping it alive, and a motion to direct staff to proceed, proceed expeditiously with the review of the Route 60 corridor as the second phase of the comprehensive plan. As part of that, like we did with the first, a working group would be appointed. That working group, again, would be advisory to staff. The Plan Commission is where the public hearings occur. Certainly, the working group, as the working group did with Waukegan Road, would hold community visioning sessions and invite the community to participate in identifying challenges, opportunities, needs, problems, creative ideas. And to authorize us to engage consultants. The council did previously approve a budgeted amount this fiscal year of $25,000 for consultants to help support the comprehensive plan study. And we would look to do that expeditiously. And alternatively, if, if the council wanted us to take a different direction, the, this would then be remanded back to the Plan Commission to undergo that site plan, which would occur under any event through the Plan Commission at a later date. So I, I wasn't planning to go through the details of the site plan, thinking that if you're going to proceed in this broader direction, that would be premature. But I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Director Zernia, why wouldn't we do this? What, what's the downside of doing, of, of doing this, of, of tabling the petition and pursuing the comprehensive plan phase first? What, what's the downside of that?
From the planning perspective, there is no downside. To, to play the devil's advocate, if, if we are in a hurry to see this property developed, there, there appears to be financing for assisted living and we could probably move this forward. But, but from a planning perspective, from consistency with the way the city has thoughtfully and carefully planned, there really is no downside.
And so from the petitioner's perspective, what's the downside?
Time. I know that the petitioner's attorney is, is with us tonight. Mr. Smith was, had another commitment out of town, so he couldn't be here. But certainly, the, the developer, the property owner would, would choose to proceed with review of the site plan. But they also have willingly acknowledged that they're interested in being part of the discussion, part of the study, and would simply like it to proceed expeditiously.
Thank you.
Thank you. One of the thoughts I have is whether we should be asking the petitioner's representative to, to comment, but before, you know, I, I raise that issue, let me ask this question to better understand the dual role you, you are proposing here. One is to engage, as you said in your write-up, one or more consultants, and then we put together a working comprehensive group. What sort of interaction do you see occurring between those two consultants and the working group?
I think there are several questions that, that we need some expertise that, that really best comes from outside the city. Is this eight and a half acre parcel viable as, as a commercial and office parcel? As, as it's currently zoned, as currently designated in the comprehensive plan? If so, is the entire eight and a half acres needed? Is it too much land? What parameters do we currently have? What development parameters, for instance, a hundred and fifty-foot setback? In the current approvals, are there aspects that actually deter commercial development? So I, I think some of that high-level input from an independent commercial developer would be appropriate.
The consultant would look at these, as you say, high-level issues of need, appropriateness, cost benefit, to look at it and provide their expertise on those issues, not being a deciding factor, but providing consulting sort of opinion as to how they view it based upon their experience and then background. And that would go to the working group, or again, is it's more work going to staff and staff working with the working group?
Much like we did with the Waukegan Business District, although we didn't bring in consultants.
Right.
The first step in the process is really gathering information, assessing what's there, assessing the opportunities. And I think in this case, it, it's a more unique property. So a, as we identify appropriate consultants and figure out the right questions to ask, that information would certainly be provided to staff, but we would certainly provide it with the working group, and it would carry through as, as data that's helping to support whatever decisions or recommendations come forward. And that would certainly be part of the data that comes through the working group, the Plan Commission, and on to the City Council. So we're just building on that, the data that's going to help create the foundation for any decisions that are made.
And at this point in time, do you have any thoughts as to a consultant, or whether you'd be recommending or using multiple consultants?
My sense is there may be an opportunity here for multiple consultants. I think with respect to the assisted living use, I, I think, again, some initial questions. Is there a need in the community, looking not only locally, but also regionally? If so, what is the right location? What is the impact on, on the hospital, on our fire department? Is a hundred beds large enough? If, if a facility is going to operate efficiently and at, at the quality that, that would be expected? Certainly when Lake Forest Place was discussed, Presbyterian Homes came forward, and there was a very, very lengthy discussion and deliberation within the community about the use and, and the, how that use could be developed, at what location, and how it could best serve the community, not just in the short term. There was a, a very long-term look taken at Lake Forest Place, the spectrum of care that, that they provide. And I, I think we'd want to do the same kind of study at this point and understand how this use, a facility in this location of this size, might play in relation to not only Lake Forest Place, but facilities in other municipalities, other villages in the, in the region.
Using, referring to an adjective you, you mentioned, an independent consultant, someone who doesn't come in with a preconceived idea of whether it's supporting one interest or another interest, but someone that can look at it from an independent aspect and apply experienced data that we may have, or they may have, to come up with suggestions or ideas and opinions. I take it.
Yes, that would be the intent.
Very good.
Can I just ask the, Kathy, the, it seems to me that it's assisted living and memory care, which it, it seems like this is a designation I haven't heard necessarily specifically before. So is that a different use than just assisted living? That's a whole value-added or some, some other part of the proposition here?
And those are the questions I think we really want to understand. I think the Plan Commission talked about assisted living and memory use, and then heard some input that perhaps this was more akin to luxury apartments. So I, I think those are, at, at this point, I, I think we want to delve into that. We really want to understand that.
Because it seems to me, if, if it is something different than service that's provided already in the community, let's say at Lake Forest Place, it would be important to understand, I mean, this is just, maybe there'll be a point in my life I'm going to know a lot more about this, or at least maybe my kids will, when I need a lot. But, but it does feel like we should, you know, we should be sure that we are adequately informed about what the value added here might be as we, as we go forward, whether it's this project or any other.
Please.
Yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense, because up until now, we've been talking about this parcel as a commercial development with daytime uses. Now we're going to put, or potentially put, a seven-by-twenty-four healthcare facility on this lot, which puts a lot of different demands on our fire and police department, which we don't really understand what that's going to be. So I'm looking forward to hearing more from the consultants as to what that demand will be.
I'm certainly in favor of doing a comprehensive study. This, I've lived with this property for six years. And there's just, you know, there's a lot of hair on this thing, unfortunately. You know, you got that, we didn't even talk about the house. And I've got to deal with the house. The setbacks of a hundred and fifty feet are kind of in- The setbacks of 150 feet are kind of inconsistent with commercial. When you recall, we were willing to do 100, but 100-foot setbacks, but not 50, when we were talking about what was labeled the Whole Foods thing, even though I don't think Whole Foods was really committed to, in any kind of memoranting of understanding to that property, as we find out right now. So I think any other approach would clearly be ready-fire aim.
Well, I also would be interested in the consultant talking to us a little bit about the synergy between this commercial area and the Waukegan Road Business District. You know, how do they interplay? Can one enhance the other rather than detracting from the other? And also considering those businesses in Conway, and maybe even, you know, talking to someone in there and saying, what amenities would you like to see here? What would you support? What would your employees support? I think would be valuable information that perhaps a consultant could help us with a little bit.
And we would definitely engage Conway Park. They did submit a letter to the plan commission, just generally stating that they didn't feel that the proposed use would support them. But certainly, we would engage them, as we did with the visioning session 12 years ago or more out there. So we would anticipate really just revisiting and understanding what's out there now, what's come to fruition, and what hasn't, and why.
Great.
Thank you. Is there any questions or comments from the audience, from petitioner potentially, attorney, about this matter?
I'm Jerry Callahan, representing the Oakley Group, which is the memory care assisted living developer, proposed developer. And the approach I think that the plan commission took was a sensible one. Instead of spending months going through technical plans and burning a lot of time without really knowing, is this a use, or are these uses that the city is interested in? And so, and I also think that there was, the plan commission was somewhat stuck in a position where they couldn't really dictate to you, as the city council, that this is what you should do. So they made the recommendation for denial. In fact, I think the plan commissioner who made the motion said, look, we can either recommend approval or recommend denial. We can't recommend approval because we haven't gone through all the technical plans, so that's how it kind of ended up here. And I think it's a sensible approach. We certainly, you know, my client doesn't want to spend months and months on a project that's not going to go anywhere, if that's what the council decides. So I think having the use vetted and receiving direction on that, then an informed decision can be made by the developer as to whether to proceed. And I appreciate Kathy Zerniak's position that it's appropriate for this to be part of the comprehensive planning process, because it is a prominent location, and it needs to be considered. So we're in support of you tabling this. We do ask that you accelerate the process, and I think that's what's being suggested here, because timing is important for development. On the other hand, spending those same months on technical analysis that doesn't go anywhere doesn't make any sense either. So we would support the process, and I agree that, you know, you want to look at all the issues that have been raised, and if you bring in a third-party consultant, that can be done. So if you have any other questions, I'm happy. I'm not sure I can answer all the specifics of the use, but, you know, when the appropriate time comes, and I do apologize, because both the Pendulum Group, Jason Smith, and the Oakley Group, this was kind of a last-minute thing to get on this agenda. We wanted it to be accelerated, and they both couldn't be here. So it wasn't because they didn't want to be, but it was difficult under the circumstances.
They sent the next-best person.
I live in the area, so it's not that difficult.
All right. Well, thank you. Fair enough. Right. Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Deb Fisher. I'm a Realtor in town, and I'm not affiliated with the project, but I just wanted to give a little bit of color, maybe from having attended the planning commission, because I know it's hard if you, especially if you were out of town and didn't have a chance to watch it perhaps, or something. But just to explain a couple of things, by right, right now, my understanding is the property can have two 42,000-square-foot office buildings on it. It was pretty much decided at the planning commission that that's not an appropriate use any longer, because we simply don't have need seemingly for that kind of office, square footage. At the planning commission, just to give a little quick background, nine people from the community did come up and speak. One of them was representing Stonebridge, was not in favor of proceeding with anything, whether it was the by right or this kind of proposal, simply because they felt that any development needed to hold up until the stormwater management issues that they feel are in Conway need to be addressed in a bigger picture. One person had more questions than, didn't have a yes or a no, that they weren't in favor or denying, but they had more questions. And then seven people were in favor, seven people mainly from the neighborhood, actually, varying from the townhouses to the condos, et cetera, were in favor of the change of use. So just to give that background, and they had concrete reasons why they felt that was a good change. Of the commissioners, of the six that were present, four were inclined in favor of the use change, or they were clearly not opposed to the change. Two were more focused on wanting the city council to hear the input. They just simply all felt that it was not their purview. I mean, I think was the end of the, you know, as it was stated, there was no point in them telling you what to do, in a sense. So Commissioner Freeman was intent on saying that they were denying the request, but not the use. So, and he was proposing that, he wanted the language to be clear, that he didn't feel the petitioner should be held up unnecessarily. So they did want to have it moved expeditiously through this, to the extent that it's possible. So I just wanted to add that kind of picture to it.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions or thoughts at council? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve a motion, tabling the petition filed by Oakley Development Group and Pendulum Lake Forest Partners LLC, as well as direct staff to proceed promptly with a review of the Route 60 corridor as the next phase of the comprehensive plan update. And in order to facilitate the review, authorize the city manager, in consultation with the chairman of the Finance Committee of Council, to engage consultants on a short-term basis as determined to be appropriate for an amount not to exceed the city manager's authority. And also to authorize the city manager, in consultation with the mayor, to appoint a comprehensive plan working group for this next phase of the plan update in support of the city staff. Second, it's a roll-call vote.
Alderman Beidler.
Aye.
Alderman Morris.
Aye.
Alderman Newman.
Aye.
Alderman Rommel.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Preschlack.
Aye.
Alderman Moreno.
Aye.
Alderman Bushman.
Aye.
Eight yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you. That concludes the working, or the public portion of tonight's meeting. We are about to go into executive session. There will be no other council business conducted tonight after the executive session. With that, may I have a motion to adjourn into executive session pursuant to five ILCS 120/221. Council will be discussing annual review of the executive session minutes mandated by section 2.06 of the Open Meetings Act.
Second.
It's a roll-call vote.
Alderman Beidler.
Aye.
Alderman Morris.
Aye.
Alderman Newman.
Aye.
Alderman Rommel.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Preschlack.
Aye.
Alderman Moreno.
Aye.
Alderman Bushman.
Aye.
Eight yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you. We are adjourned into executive session.